Courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on www.minnihaw county.org, reviewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Tuesday, September 3rd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commissioner's staff, requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the July 22nd, 2019, meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any planning commission member wish to have any item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on any item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the planning commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Okay, the first item is approval of the minutes of the July 22nd, 2019, meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 19-34 to transfer three building eligibilities from the northeast quarter, southeast quarter, and southwest quarter of the northwest quarter to the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, all in section two, township 102-North, range 51-West. Petitioner is Darwin Sletton. He is also the owner. It's located approximately 2.5 miles northeast of Hartford. Item number three is conditional use permit 19-35 to transfer two building eligibilities from southwest quarter, northwest quarter, and southeast quarter, northwest quarter, section 13, township 104-North, range 49-West, to the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter, section 13, township 104-North, range 49-West, and northeast quarter, northeast quarter, section 14, township 104-North, range 49-West. Petitioner is Marsha Simonsma. She's also the owner. Location is 47749 246th Street. That is located two miles east of Dell Rapids. Okay, since there's no public input, nothing from the staff, nothing from the... I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Marsha Passon. Those items have been approved, you are free to go. Move on to the regular agenda, item number four. Kevin, you want to address this item?
Yes. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item number four is conditional use permit number 1927 to allow salvage repair, collision repair with spraying paint, automotive repair, and used car sales on the property legally described as lots eight and nine, Hogs Edition, in the south half of the southeast quarter, section 12, township 102-North, range 50-West. The petitioner is Vitaly Silchuk and it's located at 47184 Wild Clover Circle, as seen in this map. This item is a continued item from the June 24th planning commission meeting. There was public comment and concerns over the item, including concerns over excess cars and junk, as well as concerns over oil that was spilled over the winter and was at that time not entirely cleaned up. Since that time, staff has visited the site, and I'll show you the site pictures in a moment, and I've worked with the petitioner. The petitioner has showed, given evidence that the site is cleaned up through engineering checks of the property. The petitioner has stated that he has removed 42 cars from the property for scrap metal and there are still vehicles there, and some of those will be moved, but some of them will be staying there as part of his operation with the cars. With all the cleanup, staff finds that the petitioner has shown the ability to work with the request of the planning commission and by completing the oil spill cleanup and by completing clearing especially the highly visible areas required by the permit on the east side of the property. Staff will continue to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit and the staff report from that point on hasn't, has remained largely the same. Just a little bit of review of the site plan. The petitioner is also requesting that eventually this will become expanded lot with the new building with different uses. And then, that'd be the new building, and that would be occupied, and if it's a use that requires a conditional use permit, that'll be before you in the future. And then I have some pictures from kind of before in June and then in August as well. So there's June photos of the site, a June photo, and then this is the August photo here, with the June one in the corner. Looks like a driveway was built to the back of the building there. See some of the difference of the, and some cars have been removed. That's the June photo. And this would be the highly visible area that you can see the interstate in the background of this photo. He has cleaned that up substantially from where it was in the June photo there with a few cars and tires and other things. And then here's where the oil cleanup took place. There's some riprap there in kind of a waterway on the neighbor's property, and then this is a waterway in the ditch. The ditch has not been planted with grass yet, but the petitioner said that he is working with a landscape company to reseed it in the fall here when it's better seeding climate. And then this would be a little photo of the conditions number five and number nine. Those conditions require a hard-surface driveway to be placed between the road and the what's currently hard-surfaced on the main portion of the parking area. And then there should be no storage behind the east building in that triangled area there. So with that, I will take any questions, and the petitioner is here, and we'll move forward. Is there any questions?
I have one. All the conditions that are here tonight were on the previous month?
Correct.
Exactly? Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, Kevin? Not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
My name is Vitaly Silchuk and the address is 47184 Wild Clover Circle. So a couple months ago, we were here and trying to get permission to use the property for more auto repair and rebuilding. We do repairables and things like that, so, and to put a building there also, and we had a lot of stuff going on there because with the oil spill. And with the complaints about all the cars and stuff that we had out there, we've cleaned up a lot more, and even that picture isn't even current with what you guys saw, so probably removed even more than 42 cars now to scrap and cleaned up a lot of the area. The oil thing got all cleaned up, and Houston Engineering, we worked with Brad, and they did all the tests and the state, and all the people are happy with all the results of that. We got grass to sow in mid-September is when we're looking to do that. It's gonna be the best thing, that's what the landscape guys say. Yeah, I was, I hope that everything works out this time and we can be able to use that land and the buildings properly for business and for our growth, so.
Any questions for the petitioner? I have one.
Yeah.
Don't you have a location here in Sioux Falls?
Yeah.
Was that off of Rice Street?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we do. Also, I'm gonna add that with the whole oil thing, so there's no more oil storage there at all, you know? We had, just to remind you guys, from last time, we had a propane tank full of used oil because we have an oil burner on Rice Street. And when we started the business, you know, we didn't have as much customer base and things like that, so we would literally collect oil from, used oil from whoever we could find, so we can burn it in the winter. But now with, you know, the way we do business, now we have enough oil changes and, you know, regular oil work on Rice Street where we don't have to, you know, bring oil anymore, find oil, or store oil, or whatever to use for the winter time. So we don't, there's no reason for us to store fluids or oil out there anymore unless we have an oil burner or something out there at some time, but right now, that's not the case, so.
Any other questions? We may call you back.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak to this item?
Is there proponents?
Or proponents? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Schwartzman. I'm at 47188 Wild Clover Circle, just to the right of the property in question. They have cleaned a lot of cars off the site, which I appreciate very much, although there are still tires stacking up as of today. They have also been bringing in cars for repair through these last couple months without any permit. I'm concerned about the car sales out in front, what that's gonna do to the traffic on Wild Clover Circle. There can be a lot of activity. The cars that they are producing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, are not high quality, so the, their clientele is not gonna be considerate of other areas out there. And also, I'm concerned about traffic coming out there over the weekends for safety of the other businesses in the area. I'm for businesses growing and promoting themselves. I just want it done right. I'm concerned about all the gravel area as they build their business inside, how they're gonna control oil leaking from all these salvaged cars that are gonna be dropped in there, stored, and my guess they're gonna be salvaged. Some are gonna be taken apart and making another car, and there's gonna be junk in the future again. So, you know, how are we gonna control that? I want them to do a business, but at the same point in time, I want it to be a professional business, not just a chop shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Kevin Wilson. I'm a co-owner of the business across the street to the south at 47187 Wild Clover. I'm a little bit of a car nut, and I have been in many salvage yards around the area. Nordstrom's and Oakleaf Salvage are the ones that are local, and they are, they're kind of isolated to themselves. They have no neighbors, I think for a reason. I called Nordstrom's Auto Body Recycling after that last meeting, and what they do with the car when they get it in, they remove all the fluids, every one of them. They recycle all of that stuff, remove the gas, remove the tires, the rooms are still on there, and they put that thing out there so people can take parts off it and not worry about, you know, leakage of antifreeze, leakage of oils, whatever it might be, to contaminate the system. So I think, you know, with having vehicles out there, and last time, the gentleman said he was going to, you know, not touch them, I think that's the wrong approach. I think you need to recycle what you can. If you have vehicles out there for 20 years and they're leaking and they're, you know, contaminating the soil for 20 years, I don't think that's the right approach. I'm a little bit of a recycle Nazi, and I think, I think you gotta take care of stuff. And I don't think, if that's his plan, I think that's a faulty plan. I think you gotta get those fluids out, get the tires out and such, and like I said, I think there's a reason why those salvage yards are off, you know, Highway 40, well, it's, I guess it's Garrettson, and, you know, Oakleaf Salvage is off the highway too. There's not a lot of businesses around them. I'm just concerned that you're gonna be able to see a bunch of cars over the course of a year, over the years where they start stacking them up, they're no longer viable, and you're gonna look on interstate and see some businesses that have kept their stuff clean, and like Gary, I'm concerned what's gonna happen in two years. You know, what kind of power does the commission have in two years if this turns into be a mess? That's my concern. Thanks.
Anyone else care to address this item?
I'm James Miron, 25731 Cottonwood Avenue in Sioux Falls. I operate a collision repair facility just north of this. I went back, I was at the last meeting here on the 24th of June and just kinda listened in, and one of the things I see in the conditional use permit, I went back and pulled mine from 2007, and one of the things that was in mine that isn't in this one is I had to put in a dry chemical fire suppression system for my painting area. And I don't know why it's not in this. They say they're gonna do kind of the same type of repair, so I kinda wanted an answer of why that was not stated in that.
Okay, we'll have to, we'll address it with some of our staff to see why
Fine.
there is the difference side.
Yep.
Actually, I don't know myself.
I know real water doesn't support a, you know, a water system up there. They don't have the water capacity, and that's why I had to put in a dry suppression system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, can you address that?
So in order to get a paint booth, the paint booths are required to get a D E N R permit from the state of South Dakota, and I guess I am not aware of any sort of building codes, which maybe previous planners who did that permit in 2007 was aware of some sort of a building code that required fire suppression. If he does put in a, if there's a building code that requires fire suppression, our building inspector has been requiring whatever needs are, needs to be met by the International Building Code, and he would be able to cover that at the engineering phase of the project. I guess that's what I have because I wasn't aware of any need for a fire suppression.
Guess we'll take it under consideration depending upon what the commission decides. Any, anyone else care to address this item from the audience? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Tracy Higgins. I own the property directly across the street from him. It's 4718 Wild Clover Circle. I have the same concerns everybody else does. What do we do if things become a mess again? What is gonna, how is a used car lot gonna work out there? Concerns about what it's gonna look like, and it also really doesn't look still that great from the interstate. It's still kind of a mess, a salvage yard, and I totally agree with them. There's a reason the other salvage yards are by themselves, and you don't have your neighbors having to look at it all the time, and your clientele that are coming to your businesses also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Petitioner, would you like to come forward again? Can you address any of these items that they're, that they have concerns with?
Okay, I wanna clear up the salvage yard thing. Well, nobody, we do not wanna have a salvage yard, and we don't intend on having a salvage yard. I think maybe the description thing is confusing or something like that. I think what we wanna do is collision repair and automotive repair and used car sales out of that place. Now, we do rebuilders, so we buy wrecked cars and fix them, but we're not looking to, a salvage yard is, they take on anything and everything, and it doesn't matter if you can fix it or not, and they sell parts, you know, that's how they make money off of the stuff, or recycle the parts. So we're not looking to recycle anything or to, you know, or sell parts out of that place, or buy cars just for that. All the vehicles are meant to be repaired and are restored and sold or whatever. So we're not looking to do a salvage yard. Like Nordstrom's or Oakleaf, for example.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for him?
I'm sure I got.
Doug?
So do you, before any automobile is brought out to your property, you go inspect that to say, okay, that one we'll use, this one over here, no, we're not gonna accept that? Or how do you, how do you, is there a fine line between salvageable and junk?
So we do the same thing on Rice Street. So we have, you know, the same cars are out on Rice Street, you know, standing out, just out in front. They're just, they have some sort of collision obviously in them. Usually, there's no oil leaking out of them, you know, there's engines and stuff like that, or the cars run and drive. So anything that can be repaired, anything that, you know, is out at any other body shop that's repairable is kind of what we're, what we're trying to fix and work on. Our previous, you know, our, the cars that we had out there before, you know, we've talked about already, they weren't meant to be repaired or anything like that. They were accumulated through all sorts of weird ways where people have left cars and abandoned their cars, and, you know, all sorts of different stuff like that with us in our shop, so. We don't have any more, we don't have intentions of doing any of that, just to have vehicles there that, we have brought vehicles, we buy vehicles every week on the auction, you know? So we've bought vehicles, brought vehicles there that are gonna get repaired and resold, so.
Any other questions for him?
Also, I wanna add about the paint booth thing. So that's something in the future, you know, where that building that we might build or would like to build, you know, that would be something that would be worked out there, and whatever obviously needs to happen would be, had to be done, you know, whatever that costs or whatever that has to be to legally be able to paint vehicles there, so, you
Scott, that's a separate issue.
So if he decides to build a building, isn't that?
Well, it's a separate issue, however, I'm unsure whether that's a requirement of the building code, so I think if you really, I think just to cover all our bases, if you feel that's necessary, you should just add the condition, and if there's a redundancy, nothing's harmed. I mean, if it's a requirement of the state law, he has to meet it anyway. If it's not, and that's your wishes, then he will have to put in the dry chemical suppression system if he does a paint booth.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this?
Being in the construction industry, I do a lot of commercial property, commercial work, and I know there'll be codes that, to build a proposed building, there'll be major codes that they gotta abide by, and one of them will be sprinkling. But the other concern I will still have is they're still bringing in salvaged cars that they're gonna repair, and they're still sitting on the gravel, and they cannot, you know, say that, well, they're not leaking oil. So now, that oil is still leaking on all that gravel, there's no containment of the oil, and it can still run downhill, which is to the east. The biggest thing, again, I'm gonna say, is putting out the resale of cars out on front on Wild Clover Circle. Now, this is not a high-traffic area, so who's gonna be coming out there? I have no idea. I've been by the place on Rice Street, and that is full of cars. Here, again, it's, the businesses that are out here are businesses that, it's a quiet place, they come in, their business vehicles come and go out of there, but all of a sudden, now we've got resold cars. All the other businesses, I think, are gonna be struck by that where, what, the clientele, it's not, it's not on 41st Street, it's on Wild Clover Circle out in the county, so.
Anyone else? Guess I'll close the floor.
Thank you. Madam Chair? I, I think I'm, I'm concerned. We still have a lot of cars that seem to be being brought in. Maybe with no, we don't have a building yet, or we don't have an application for a building, and I realize that this step probably has to get approved before we can go forward with the building, but I'm concerned about the accumulation of cars out there, and, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not real, I, I'm just concerned about the whole thing.
I guess I'd like to agree with what Becky, what Becky had to say. That's what I've been thinking about all day, I guess, is the accumulation of cars over the last few years, and if you're gonna salvage them, I guess, how come they haven't been salvaged yet, I guess? That's what concerns me about getting other cars and just sitting out there, wasting away, so. I guess that's kind of my concern, too.
Anyone else have a comment?
Madam Chair, yes. I definitely agree with the concern about the accumulation of cars, and I understand that there are circumstances that may occur periodically that do lend themselves to accumulate stuff or things, or whatever term you wanna use. I also look at this and I think to myself about, you know, some of the concerns I've heard here as well with the additional traffic on that circle with the onsite car sales. And I guess, you know, if we're looking at, it's not like you have little kids out there, it is a commercial space, but I don't feel that it's in Congress with, I guess, the type of businesses. it's in, in, in Congress with, I guess, the type of businesses that are out there currently.
Okay. Any other commissioners have a comment? I'll entertain any ki- any kind of motion.
Madam Chair, question for Kevin.
Becky, sure.
Um, so Kevin, on those first before and after pictures, I, I wasn't able to see if there are discernible difference. But from your perspective as staff, you felt like there was significant improvement? Or could I see those, could I ask him to show those pictures again? Slowly for my bold mind.
Right, so here's, uh, the one. You can see the, the added road. Uh, I don't know if you can quite tell, I wish I could zoom in a little bit better. Um, on the left picture, there's some cars that are crushed on the, the left of the, of the old picture. And some of those cars have been missing out of the crushed car area. Uh, again, here, there are, there are some gaps, uh, but as you can see, there are lots of cars there. Uh, uh, then, that's an old picture, I don't have a like picture for that. And then this would be the area of, of the most cleanup here, um, that, uh, there wasn't anything there noticeable at the time that I visited the site. Uh, if there is, um, concern about a number of cars, you, I guess there's other things they could consider, like putting a, a limited number of cars you could have on the site. Something like that that would make it, uh, enforceable for us in the future to say, okay, you have a hundred and one cars and you're only allowed a hundred. Uh, that would be something enforceable for the future of the salvage yard. Um, so as not just accumulating cars, or something like that, I guess, would be an idea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kevin.
Other comments?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
In spite of my concerns, I mean, I sure, I sure like to promote business growth and I guess I'm trying to figure out if there's a way we can, to do this that would, um, we would all maybe feel more comfortable with, that would satisfy concerns of some of the neighbors. But also acknowledge, I mean, he's made, when I look at the pictures again, he has made some significant progress. I guess the question is if the progress is, is enough.
Any other comments?
Do you think of a car limit, Becky?
I have no idea what that pretty would, would reasonably hold.
Could we have the petitioner come back up?
I can. Petitioner, will you please come forward again? They have some questions for you.
Madam Chair. Um, on your lot in Sioux Falls, is it Modern Solutions?
Yeah, yeah.
Approximately what on the average number of cars you have on that site at one time?
Well, we have a small, a small car lot next to our garage there, so there could be ten, fifteen cars for sale, you know? Probably less than, like, ten right now there for sale. And then right next to our garage there, we have a small area where we're, you know, have vehicles that we're repairing. And I can count them probably visually. Be twelve cars, you know, that we're working on that are, that are there.
Would it be safe to say somewhere thirty to forty?
Yeah. Also, I wanna comment on the pictures, so the pictures aren't good, great. Uh, if we go to, I don't know, if you guys wanna move a couple pictures back or forward, I mean, so that's how it was, so that we don't have a great view of that right now, but that's all cleaned out right now. Uh, you see those cars over there is that way and there's just like all piled up over there? So that, those are all gone, the scrap guy picked all those up after the pictures were taken. So we probably moved another eight cars, you know, after Kevin was there taking pictures, you know? So right now, there's, I mean, I, I got, right now, all my cars are lined up, up on the fence. Okay, right up on the fence line to where Wild Clover is. And then I have out there, one, two, I have my truck and a trailer, three or four cars, you know, up there where you can visually see from the interstate. You know what I mean? And the concern about the vi- visibility of the interstate and things like that. Eventually, when we put a building up there, that's obviously, you know, that's all you're gonna see from the interstate then, which is a building. So, again, I wanna not, I don't like salvage yard because we're not, we don't, we're not doing a salvage yard. I don't like that, that we're using that word. It's not a salvage yard. And the cars that come in, come and they go, they get fixed and they're, and, and they go. Right now, because we're, we're really limited in space in, on Rice Street. So that's why the, the cars are out there right now, so, you know what I mean? So hopefully, what the goal is so that we can have a better place to work and, and get them out quicker and, and, and out back to Rice Street for now to sell, you know? We don't have the, uh, you know, the employees and things like that to keep somebody out there selling cars or anything like that, you know? We're small.
So, I've heard, you know, clientele brought up a couple times.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what, would you venture that you would have clientele coming out? Or would they still pretty much go to the Modern Solutions site?
No, pro- more than likely right now. First of all, I was insulted by some of the clientele comments. I mean, I think our clients are great, you know, they're not redheaded and curly, but they're, they're good people, you know what I mean? And they're looking for a good deal on a car and I think our quality vehicles are good or greater than what you're gonna buy in a used car lot. But that's, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that later. But, uh, uh, the, no, so the, the, what we wanna do is we wanna fix our cars out there. We wanna, we wanna fix the body, the collision, things like that. Get the cars out there ready so then we can bring them in town to sell them, you know? That's mainly the goal. I mean, eventually, hopefully, maybe one day, I don't know how, maybe we will sell cars out there, you know? Put cars out for sale there, but it doesn't make any sense. I mean, nobody's gonna, no, you know, nobody's driving by Wild Clover looking for cars, used car sales, you know what I mean? So that's not even something that we have to have, that's not, that's not a big deal at all, you know, about people, traffic, people driving by there or whatever, that's, it's not realistic for us right now, you know? We're selling cars on East Rice Street, that's where we'll probably continue selling cars, you know? Um, we don't have to sell cars on Wild Clover, you know?
Madam Chair, question for you.
Yeah.
Hearing what your, your, you know, the comment yous make and maybe hearing what these guys are saying as well, maybe it's more palatable for everybody. Um, I know ideally we just, you know, address all the uses, future uses now, but, um, you know, point one was to allow for automotive sales onsite.
Right.
Uh, if it was something that was removed to, you know, allow us to move forward, is that something you'd be?
Yeah, we can remove that. I mean, it's not, it's not a, that's not a killer for us. I mean, we really want to fix cars out there. That's the big thing, you know? We wanna, we wanna fix our cars out there.
Becky?
How many cars would you potentially think would be the number that you would?
Have out there?
Yeah, have, have out there. And I know once you would have a building constructed, you're.
I think the cars are gonna be moving and things like that, so, I mean, maybe forty, I don't know, you know, thirty, fifty, I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Petitioner? Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I think Mike had a good idea about striking the first part of number one. To remove the use of automotive sales. We already have conditions in there related to fluids and, um, the guidelines that would need to be followed according to the D E N R. If there's a concern about the chemical, about the lack of, um, fire retardants in the area, um, we could certainly add, I would move that we would put in a condition that would be, um, how would I phrase this here? Add a condition that there will be a dry chemical fire suppression system within the painting area.
Becky, are you making that as a motion?
As an amendment to this list. So I guess that's a yes.
Okay. Commissioners, did you hear that? Adding to, adding condition about the, for the painting facility and to strike the use of automobile sales, that's number one on the conditions on the property? She has made that as a motion?
I'll second it.
Any, any further discussion?
I guess, Madam Chair, I would like to add on there, a maximum number of cars, I guess, on there. I would like to make sure they keep moving them and they're not sitting there. I don't know, thirty cars sound all right, I guess, to, I guess, no more than thirty cars out there at a time.
So that'd be like an additional condition in number fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on there, right? And what, what was your number? I said thirty, no more than thirty cars.
Petitioner?
I'd like to see them just keep moving, I guess. I mean, if you get, I mean, there's no sense of having more than you can handle. You should be able to just move through them and move on to the next one, I guess, is, is my point.
The thing about thirty is, uh, if he's a good steward and thirty works out and he'd always come back later and amend it if, um, he can show us that he can handle thirty.
I guess I would feel more comfortable with that and.
And, and can you call it vehicles? Because they can see there's more than just cars there.
Okay. Vehicle, okay, vehicles, okay. Does that include, is there a camper or anything else out there? Is that gone? Wasn't there a camper or something there?
Yeah.
Is that gone or? Okay. So.
Okay, any further discussion? Any additional conditions? Go ahead.
We need a motion from somebody to approve in a second and then a vote.
Okay, I'll make a mo-
Make the motion to approve with the conditions that you have just stated, if you could put those in there.
That's what you want.
Okay. You made a motion to approve the conditional use permit with those amendments. So if you could, the, the, the previous motion that you had, if you could just withdraw that motion and formally go forward with a motion to approve the conditional use permit and state the additional conditions that you have on the lot there. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
I gotta, you withdraw my motion then too, or, can I just, I need to withdraw mine then?
Yes.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion then too.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Becky?
I move that we, um, approve this conditional use permit with the following changes to the conditions. That we, on number one, that we strike the use and for the use of automotive sales, that we add the condition that there shall be dry chemicals, fire suppression in the painting booth area. And that we add the condition that there will be no greater than thirty vehicles stor- stored at the site.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Okay. With the additional condition, additional conditions that she just stated, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, there's no old business, no new business?
There is.
Yeah, I was gonna bring up, um, the South Coast Land Association, maybe October sixteenth, seventeenth. And maybe a period to our Brookings County. And I'm gonna bring that up to you. And if you want to attend, I'll wait for your registration. Let me know.
Do any of you go?
October sixteenth and seventeenth?
And Brookings? Brookings?
I'll check my calendar, maybe. Okay, that's the, gotcha.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.